Good afternoon and welcome to the joint hearing of the committees on government operations, judiciary, and ways and means. Today is Thursday, February 17. Can you mute yourselves, please? Thank you. At 3 o'clock PM. I'm Sharon Moriwaki, Chair of the Committee. And joining me remotely today are GBO Committee members, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, I don't know, Senator Chang, Senator Gabbard, and Senator Favela, I know is on soon. And my co-chairs from judiciary, Senator Carl Rhodes, and Vice and Chair of Ways and Means, Senator Dela Cruz. Do, I don't know, I think we have members from each of your committees. If you're on, you want to introduce them, Carl, Senator Rhodes.
Why don't we forego that? They'll be coming in going, Senator Favela is here, I see him, other than that, I don't think he was.
Okay, likewise with WAM, Ways and Means, Senator Dela Cruz.
Senator Casio is here too, my apologies.
Okay. Okay, I see Senator Miss Alucha and Vice Chair Senator Gil Keith Algaran. So we will move on. Oh, and Senator, in no way, from Ways and Means. So before proceeding, let me just make a few housekeeping announcements. The hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. And you can find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings and live and on-demand video pages of the legislature's website. And because of our recording hearing, we need 90 minutes for this and government operations hearing that will follow. So to accommodate everyone, we will limit testimony, two minutes. Testimonies will be posted on the legislature website. So the bill that we're hearing before this committee is one bill, Senate Bill 2930, Senate Draft 1 relating to government, establishing and funding two new units within the Department of Attorney General. First up is the Department of Attorney General. Is someone here from the AG's office?
Good afternoon, Senators, Senator Moriwaki, Senator Rhodes, and Senator Dela Cruz, and members of the committees. I'm Holly Chikata, Attorney General. Michelle Poo, our Deputy Attorney General, will be testifying as well. I just wanted to pop in to say I buy strong support for this bill. This work that you're looking for us to do is extremely important and necessary. These specialized units are an efficient and effective way of getting the work done. To have dedicated people to address fraud, white-collar crime, corruption, and human trafficking is going to be very helpful for us to follow through on these types of cases. I understand the Honolulu Prosecutor's Office will be here to testify as well. And we will, we encourage the legislature to provide additional funding to the counties to combat human trafficking. We understand HPD has a morals unit, but not a specific unit for human trafficking. And we believe investigations or investigators in our human trafficking unit would be extremely helpful. Currently, we have a statewide coordinator slash prosecutor position. And statewide coordination is going to be essential among the counties as well as the state in order for the state to be able to also prosecute these cases. We anticipate and expect to work closely with the counties on this. I'm.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Michelle Poo. I'm a Deputy Attorney General within the Criminal Justice Division that is intending to be the housing area for these two brand-new units that are set out to be created by Senate Bill 2930. These two units are essential, as the Attorney General already stated. I don't want to override the two-minute period that is required by the committee. However, the designated positions and the funds that have been earmarked for these two units are essential. These types of cases are extremely complex and will require dedicated staff to carry them out with fidelity. We do remain available for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an individual, Daniel Hanagami. Daniel, is Daniel on?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, Chair Dela Cruz, Chair Rhodes. Thank you for inviting me over to testify on Senate Bill 2930 SD1. I'm strongly in opposition of this bill, as stated in my written testimony. I am here on vacation and I'm testifying on my own behalf. Besides my written testimony, the bill is supposed to add investigators to the Criminal Justice Division. My comment is that investigators should not be under the supervision of attorneys because as law enforcement officers, we have qualified immunity. And these attorneys at the Criminal Justice Division, the supervisor is an at-will attorney. And she may compromise the investigation if something, some type of accusation comes on. Concerning matters of investigation, what they stated investigating white-collar crimes, political corruptions, we are already doing it in the Investigations Division. We handle complex investigation, financial fraud, money laundering, racketeering cases. We investigate charter schools. We investigate campaign spending fraud that's sent to us by the Campaign Spending Commission. We take on all basically administrative investigation as well as civil investigation. The most appropriate thing to do is have all these new units come to our Investigation Division and have me supervise it. Concerning the human trafficking division, unit, I believe that the county's Honolulu Police Department Prosecutors always, Office already have a unit to address this, and it's not necessary. These positions should be converted to investigations and put under my supervision. Thank you for letting me testify. I have standby for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to testify? I see Tom Brady.
Yeah, Chair Moriwaki, this is Tom Brady. I'm from the Honolulu Prosecutor's Office. And I am available to answer any questions you may have. I was recently invited to participate today, and I thank you for that opportunity. The Prosecuting Attorney's Office does support the concept of funding dedicated prosecution units to combat both sex and human trafficking crimes as well as public corruption crimes. These are both important community pursuits in restoring and maintaining trust in our government and safety in our community. And quite frankly, in my 35 years as a local and federal prosecutor, I've learned the formula for successful investigations and prosecutions. This formula can be repeated, duplicated over and over again. And it is embedding dedicated teams of prosecutors, forensic examiners, investigators, and clerical support, all on a single team, focused on the same objectives. Quite frankly, today, almost all crime has some aspect of electronic or digital evidence. Public corruption and human trafficking offenses have electronic evidence in spades. In other words, a lot. And to do these crimes successfully, to prosecute them, you have to treat them as white-collar investigations to be successful. This bill dedicating units to public corruption and sex and human trafficking crimes addresses that. So we are in support of it. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Members, questions? Is there anyone else here to testify? We do have written testimony from BNF with comments from the Kukuna Caucus of the Democratic Party in support and one individual in support. No one else testify, members, any questions? Oh, I see Senator Keith Algaran.
And maybe the Attorney General's Office or Mr. Brady can just comment on, how should a unit like this be structured? I think there was testimony by Mr. Hanagami that there should be a separation between the investigators and the lawyers. I guess prosecutors are going to be involved in this. You have any comments on that?
Who's Attorney General?
Hi, Senator Michelle Poo. Currently, we already have specialized units within the Department of the Attorney General, three of them under the Criminal Justice Division currently. One of them involving Medicaid fraud, the other involving internet crimes against children, and a third, the tobacco enforcement unit, with dedicated prosecutors, dedicated investigators, dedicated support staff. So it's not something that is new to our department or to the Criminal Justice Division.
But I guess the question was, though, is there a separation between the attorneys and investigators to maintain some independence for the investigators?
There is, in a sense, Senator. When you look at the makeup of the specialized units themselves, the prosecutors cannot lead or direct an investigation. Chief Hanagami is correct insofar as investigators have immunity that allows them to investigate under an immunity agreement, whereas the attorneys don't have that. What the attorneys do is they help guide an investigation and provide insight on what is legally permissible under the laws in the state of Hawaii that change every day. Our laws here are very complex in terms of search and seizure law, requiring search warrants when subpoenas are sufficient, when arrest warrants need to be obtained in lieu of an arrest without a warrant. That's something that a prosecutor is going to be needed for and needed to be readily available at a moment's notice.
As far as supervision of the investigators, though, what's the line, what's the line there?
There is currently an overall supervisor. It may not necessarily be a deputy. Some of our supervisors have strictly supervisory roles, and they're not actually prosecuting cases actively. They are supervisors.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I'll ask the same question of Mr. Brady. What, how do you operate?
Yes.
Operations.
I concur with all of those remarks from Michelle. And likewise, at the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, we have, when fully staffed, over 100 attorneys spread out over six divisions, including specialized units like white-collar, sex assault, sex trafficking, career criminal, elder abuse, domestic violence, and juveniles. And like the Attorney General's Office, we have dedicated investigators that are part of that investigation group. They are supervised by our chief investigator. But the idea is to get everybody in the same room, talking about the same objectives. And that is achieved with this bill.
So just a follow-on question then. So when we say that the investigators are supposed to be independent investigating and that the attorneys prosecute, but this unit would be all of them in one unit, with investigation and the prosecution and forensic analysis, all within a one team working on same cases, is that different than how you operate with the separation?
Yeah, and I think it can be achieved where the investigators stay in their lane and do their investigation. And as Michelle has pointed out, the prosecutor will help guide in assisting in what the current law is on a lot of various areas. But in coming to, into the same room, we're able to help guide the investigation. But that still is in the lane of the investigators, and it works.
Thank you. I see Senator Rhodes.
Next, Chair. I had a question for. Sorry, trying to make my hand go away. There it is. I had a question for the AGs, for the Attorney General. So this bill would appropriate nine, 18 new positions, nine for each of these two units. I, maybe, call me hopelessly naive, but I, nine people is a lot of people to be investigating anything, really. What happens if there's not enough cases in the particular units, Kulianna? Can they be assigned to other areas? Or do they have to, or do they have to only work on that particular area?
Thank you, Senator Rhodes, for the question. Yes, absolutely. If they are general-funded positions and we're not using special funds or federal funds, they absolutely can be deployed to do other types of work. Our Criminal Justice Division has more than enough work to keep these people busy if there happens to not be enough for them in the SEPU or the HTU unit, which I would venture to guess they would be more than enough for them to do in those units as well.
Thank you. Is there, it doesn't look like these 18 AGs are in exactly the same employment status as other AGs are. Is there a difference, or am I? And if so, why?
No, there is not a difference. They will be deputy AGs. I don't believe all 18 positions are attorneys.
Right, right, I'm sorry. Of the attorneys, yes.
Correct.
But they're all Chapter 76, they're all civil servants, except that AGs are generally exempt. I mean, deputy AGs are exempt.
Correct. AGs are exempt, as well as the analysts.
Okay. But there's no, for the deputy AGs, it's the same status as all the other deputy AGs.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Chair. I have other questions, a lot of people go.
Okay, anybody else with questions? I don't see any other hands out, so proceed. Oh, Kidani, oh, Senator Kidani. Senator Kidani?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, so my question, of these 18 positions, how many are investigators and how many are attorneys? Prosecutors?
I believe in the two separate units, there are two investigators as well as two deputies to each unit. The trafficking unit is going to have a supervisor as well. The rest of the people are going to be support staff. The trafficking unit is going to have a victim slash survivor advocate who is going to assist with facilitating services and also assisting these individuals through the legal proceedings as they transpire.
Yes, and there are also positions for legal assistant and legal clerks for each of the unit.
And so can I ask Thomas Brady, Tom Brady, love the name? Same question. You said you guys have about 100 people in your organization. How is that broken out?
Yes, ma'am, we have, in the two relevant sections, we have a white-collar crime in our, in our office. We have three dedicated deputy prosecutors who are in that unit. They are supervised by what I would consider the best white-collar prosecutor in the state of Hawaii. That includes federal prosecution as well, Chris Van Martyr. And we work with HPD with their white-collar crime unit, their crime lab, their computer forensic lab, and their forensic accountant and auditors. We unfortunately, before this administration got to the office last year, we lost a forensic examiner that was a contract worker in this office, which was somebody that we really needed to do white-collar cases. But Chris has trained dozens of white-collar prosecutors throughout the state.
Excellent question.
And so that is for the white-collar section. And then we have, for the sex trafficking unit, we also have three deputies that are dedicated to sex assault and sex trafficking. We have a fourth deputy that is also the Human Trafficking Task Force Coordinator and also does cases as well. She has been a prosecutor for approximately 20 years and focuses primarily on sex assault cases. So we actually have a sex trafficking of a minor case set for jury trial April 18th of this year. So that's one of the cases that we're currently working on. And as far as public integrity cases, we have done public corruption cases in the past. In fact, Chris Van Martyr has prosecuted bribery cases that involved employees at the Motor Vehicle Division, the Liquor Commission, as well as the city's Department of Facility Maintenance. So we do have individuals that do that already here.
I guess what I was trying to get at is how many are on the prosecution side and how many are in the investigation side?
Right, so our investigators, we have a pool of about 24 to 25 investigators. And then when we need them for a particular unit, we will task a particular person. Sometimes a particular investigator has a set skill that is very conducive to doing sex trafficking crimes. And so we'll rely on that one, that one investigator for those types of crimes. So right now, we're really using only one investigator per unit. But the vision that Steve has for the office is to embed investigators in with those particularized units and have them work the cases alongside our partners at HPD.
And on the prosecuting side, so you have investigators, you have prosecutors. So what's the mix? You have 24, 25 investigators, how many prosecutors?
Well, as I said, fully staffed, we would have over 100 prosecutors in the office. Right now, we have 93 prosecutors. In the white-collar section, the unit itself, we have three prosecutors dedicated to white-collar crimes. That includes public corruption crimes. In the sex trafficking unit, we have three dedicated prosecutor, prosecuting attorneys there. And so the vision is to embed investigators there on a regular basis. Right now, we're using our investigators from a pool of investigators.
Yes, so do you have more investigators than you have prosecutors? Or is it vice versa, or is it equal?
No, ma'am.
Because in what's being proposed, you have, I think they're saying, two and two in each unit. So I'm just wondering if that's a good mix.
I think any dedicated investigators to a particular unit is a good mix. Right now, we're pulling, 25 investigators are being stretched for the needs of 100 deputy prosecuting attorneys throughout six divisions and throughout specialized divisions as well. So we only, okay.
Thank you. I see Senator Dela Cruz.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that this is not, this is not generated by the Attorney General. So I don't want, I don't want them to feel defensive about the questions that the committee is asking because this was a bill that I initiated in getting, with the information that they provided, we drafted the bill. And so some of the questions that members may be asking, you know, it was just our attempt to get it correct. There may be some adjustments needed, but I, it's not necessarily, I don't want the committees to be putting the Attorney General on the defensive because it's not really their initiative. It was our initiative, but I want to thank them for their help.
So are there any other questions? Not to put a damper on your questions, you may proceed, but are there any other questions?
Chair.
Yes. Yes, please proceed.
So with regard to the new units, they, they're going to report directly to the AG? Is that, is that my understanding? I'm sorry, this is for the AG's office again.
Senator Rhodes, no, the intent is that these units will be housed within our Criminal Justice Division.
Okay.
Means that the, at least SEPU will have its own supervisor who will still fall under the Criminal Justice Division supervisor.
And so I don't know how your normal units report. Do they, they report, is there some sort of internal written report that they send you every year to say, here's what we did? Or how does that work? And will these units be treated any differently?
Well, for all of our divisions, at the Office of the Attorney General, which is myself and Val, we meet with our supervisors quite regularly and get reports from them with respect to their divisions and the work that they are doing. But I anticipate that should continue. And now we will be adding to our discussion with the Criminal Justice Division supervisor, these two new units and the work that they're doing.
Okay. So Mr. Hanagami, I guess, I understand is the department's current chief special investigator has questioned the need for the new specialized units. How do you respond to his concerns?
Well, from the perspective of the Department of the Attorney General, we believe that these units are essential for us to be able to pursue the types of cases that we would like to pursue, which is the fraud, white-collar crime, and corruption cases. We need the dedicated individuals to be able to do that. And as was described by Ms. Poo, as well as Mr. Brady, having that, having these individuals housed within one unit makes the most sense. I think it is the most effective and efficient way for us to be able to prosecute these cases.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions? I do. In terms of what Mr. Brady has brought up and what Mr. Hanagami is talking about in terms of the sex trafficking and human trafficking, that part is of concern because it does seem like you need 24/7 investigators that go out and dig into the forensics. And so I'm just wondering whether putting up, you know, and having nine positions, not all investigators and not all attorneys. And I'm not sure what the, how you proceed when, for example, the Prosecutor's Office is focusing on that and is having problems just with the personnel they have. What can you do in terms of looking at this a little bit more carefully as to how, when I have nine positions in a unit? For the sex trafficking, I can understand the white-collar crime being, you know, one unit with attorneys and investigators. But can you describe further this sex trafficking unit and how it would operate?
So Senator Moriwaki, I'll start, and then I think Ms. Poo can add to that. But the way I view it is, you know, we currently do have a statewide coordinator slash prosecutor. He is the lone person working on these cases. With this unit, I think it will give us the resources that we need to be able to really do statewide coordination, work closely with the counties. So if the counties are struggling because they don't have enough personnel, I fully understand that. We know how that is. This will give us the opportunity to work with the counties and work together. I see it as a force multiplier for us to be able to do these cases.
And if I may just add, in terms of trafficking itself, prosecuting these cases is extremely complex, is akin to doing a very complex drug or white-collar investigation and prosecution. Right now, we were having difficulty over the past few years trying to obtain the necessary resources in order to combat these crimes in a different way. Oftentimes, these cases were reliant heavily on the availability of a victim or a survivor to come forward in court and testify under oath in an indictment phase at a grand jury or at a trial proceeding. These individuals are extremely troubled by their past. They don't want to be involved in the process anymore. So part of what we've been doing is learning from other states and other law enforcement agencies on different ways to combat these criminals. And one way of doing that is trying to arrange it through chatter-type investigations, which is taking a different approach, responding to ads and that sort of thing, taking a more proactive stance rather than reactively waiting for a victim to come forward and report an allegation. Once we have an allegation or someone to target with this unit, we will have dedicated investigators and dedicated prosecutors who are going to work in tandem to attack these particular cases and these particular individuals. And it is going to yield results that are different from anything that anybody has going on right now in the state of Hawaii. Yes, the Prosecutor's Office has a trafficking unit. The head of the unit happens to be my best friend. The head of the unit happens to be my best friend. We work these cases and talking about them all the time. And we are eager to make these types of cases. But with this type of a unit with dedicated investigators and staff and analysts who are going to help us digest this information, it's going to speak volumes in terms of what we can do in combating these types of offenses, is not something that's been available in the state before.
So have you been working with the prosecutor's office then officially in terms of how you can collaborate? Because they're saying they need resources and you are starting up a whole new unit. I'm just wondering how you can work together and coordinate what they have going and building on that as well as bringing in new ideas that your research is showing.
Us prosecutors always want to collaborate as much as possible. We've been doing that statewide. Trafficking is not a new conversation for us as prosecutors who have been in the game for a number of years. The idea of how to go about prosecuting these cases has evolved over time as we learn more and more. We're developing better networking with our survivor service providers, different agencies and collaborating what they're hearing from the victims in this area, what we can do differently. We absolutely intend to collaborate statewide as we have been doing. It's just a matter of being able to generate cases. And having dedicated staff to do that is going to assist us tremendously in that effort.
So Mr. Brady, can I just have you chime in on, on the work or how they might collaborate with you in terms of going forward because we really do want to attack this problem?
Yeah, and I, I can only echo the same sentiment that we have for the Attorney General's office and working with Shaw and, and others over there. He has more than reached out to us. We try to work in tandem when we can. And I, I think it is much better than it was years in the past. We have a very good working relationship also with the federal government as well, the US Attorney's Office. I was there for twenty-six years, so I think where we are as far as communication is concerned is very good. The more we can address this problem on multiple levels, I think it's going to be better for our community and for our young women and, and daughters and sisters here in, in Hawaii. So we welcome as much assistance as possible. We at the prosecuting attorney's office are ready for business when it comes to sex trafficking and, and public corruption cases as well.
Thank you. I think I saw Senator Keith Algaron's hand up.
I just want to follow up a little bit on some of the discussions that have been going on about the actual structure. As, as written, the bill, and obviously the bill was written from the legislators that came up with this draft with two separate sections about the two units. Did you want, would it be better for the AG's office to have more flexibility in deciding where the positions are? I mean, there's the total of eighteen positions being proposed here. Is, is the bill too specific in terms of what is being provided to you? Or are you comfortable with the nine positions for the special investigative prosecution unit and the nine positions for the trafficking unit?
Thank you, Senator. You know, I, I don't think there's an absolute need for, for it to be separate, but, but having them separate doesn't really make a difference because that would be the intent of our department anyway. We work very closely with the legislature, with Senator Del Cruz to, to kind of provide him with our input and thoughts on how this could be set up. And so, you know, we're, we're fine with the, the two units. If the legislature wanted to put them together and just provide the positions, that would work as well because as Senator Rhodes had asked about what would they do if they don't have enough work? Well, they're all still going to be under the Criminal Justice Division. So we will have them doing work, whether it's, you know, the, the white collar crimes and corruption or the sex trafficking. There's a lot of criminal work to be done. I, I just don't see that there's going to be a shortage of work for these units, however.
No, no, my, my question really is about is the way we've set up the bill going to hold up setting up the unit? I mean, is it going to hamper you in terms of organizing these two units?
I don't believe it will.
Okay, thank you.
This is a follow-on to that. The, the, what seems to have come through from both Ms. Poo and, and Mr. Brady is that the, the difference in, in how this operates or that what I see as units is that they would be dedicated to these problems and that the attorneys would work in guiding and working together, cradle to grave, so to speak, of, of cases that you don't have now. What you have are investigators working in one area and then attorneys that, that take cases. And as you have, you, you operate. But this would be a concerted effort on white collar crime, public corruption, as well as sex and human trafficking. So, so I like that idea, the focus in on, on these areas of law and being able to have investigators working closely and together with forensics analysis, analysts and attorneys. So are you saying that it's, you know, sort of more fluid?
I'm sorry, is, is the question to me?
Either you and, 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 and the Attorney General's office, yes.
To the extent that the way I view it is, I appreciate giving the, the unit or both units the flexibility, some flexibility. But it really, to me, again, I come back to success. Successful prosecutions and being able to recreate that really requires to have a dedicated unit of those forensic accountants, to me, is critical in, in doing both white collar as well as sex trafficking, to be honest with you. Those that are really know how to image devices, telephones, cell phones, computers, and then decipher that information. Michelle talked about chatter, obviously text messages, using third-party apps, being able to be flexible in knowing how to pull out data from cell phones is critical to me for both of these types of cases. And we should have dedicated folks that, that know how to do that.
Thank you. And, and Attorney General, Ms. Poo? Or, or Attorney General?
Yeah, I would have to echo a lot of what Mr. Brady has said. Our offices are both very eager to address these types of offenses. And the complicated nature of them is, it is something that not most prosecutors have the experience in dealing with. They're extremely complicated. And having dedicated investigators to that task is super critical. There, this is going to be their primary focus. Their primary objective is to focus on these types of cases. I, I certainly don't expect that they're going to be short of things to do. We have one individual in the Criminal Justice Division right now who is focused on white collar investigations. And, and she is running herself ragged, trying to keep up with the amount of material that she's looking through on a daily basis on multiple cases. This, adding to her available crew would be essential in her being able to digest all of this information. All the analysts that are going to be helping her sift through all of this material is going to be critical. And having other deputies to work with her and assist her in that regard. We have been, but we're not primarily white collar, not all of the rest of us in the Criminal Justice Division. So having dedicated personnel, as Mr. Brady said as well, is critical.
Members, any other questions? I don't see any, so thank you very much, everyone. We shall move on to the next, we shall go up, we will go to recess for decision. Thank you, everybody. And then we're going to leave the two units as is, as special units working within themselves with investigators, forensic analysts and prosecutors. But we do want to add in a number of, of, we want them to report back to us so that we have information on how it is operating so we can revisit. And I'm going to ask Chair Rhodes to read some of the items that we want in the report.
Thank you, Chair. So my suggestion is that we do three years of reporting and add, and, excuse me, add an annual reporting requirement to the legislature on aggregate data for each unit, including the number and type of cases initiated, referred to other agencies, adjudicated and closed, and the number of personnel employed and whether anyone in these two specialized units were redeployed or, or utilized outside of the, of the, of the specialized areas.
And I think outcomes from the two units as a third part of it.
That's, that's fine with me, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and so we'll have also technical non-substantive amendments. And we will work with the Attorney General's office so that it's clear in our committee report as well. Okay, so, so pass with amendments, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Changon.
Aye.
Senator Gabbard. Excuse, Senator Favela.
Aye.
Thank you. The recommendation is adopted.
For JDC members, same recommendation, any questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair Kyo Koly.
Members voting on SB twenty-nine thirty, SD one, the chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Acasio?
Aye.
Senator Gabbard is excused. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Lee is excused. Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair recommendation adopted.
Thank you, Chair Dela Cruz.
Okay, same recommendation for Ways and Means. Not sure who's laughing, but Chair votes aye.
Okay, Chair votes aye, Senator, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Inouye?
Aye.
Senator Canuha?
Aye.
Senator Kidani?
Aye.
Senator Mislucha?
Aye.
Senator Murawaki?
Aye.
Senator Wakai?
Yes.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Okay, the other members being excused, you have nine votes in favor.
Thank you. This meeting is now, hearing is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. So GVO, please stay. We are now going to three oh five PM hearing. So Austin, are we, are we on? Austin?
Oh, sorry, we're live.
Okay, are we live? Okay, this is now the three oh five hearing. We are now moving to Senate Bill two one nine one relating to grants. It clarifies existing and establishes a new grant application process and eligibility requirements for state grants. So we have no one testifying on Zoom. Do I have any, anyone else might be on? Okay, moving on to written testimony we have from the Office of Community Services in support, the Hawaii Youth Services Network in support, and Hano with comments. We will move on since no one is here. Senate Bill two four five six relating to identification cards authorizes the issuance of limited purpose identification cards for certain residents. Testifying on Zoom, we have first up the Department of Transportation.
Chair Murawaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, and members of the Committee on Government Operations. The Department of Transportation is in support of this, the intent of this very important measure. We would like to stand on our testimony, however, if, if we feel that at this juncture, it's important to make a couple of comments. First, if you would consider having the documentary requirements for the limited purpose ID cards the same as the documentary requirements for the limited purpose driver's license, it could eliminate some confusion. So if you would consider that, we think that it would be helpful. The second point that I'd like to make is on page five of the bill on line nineteen. It says, a United States Customs and Immigration Services Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival Approval Letter. There is no such agency called Customs and Immigration Services. There's Customs and Border Protection and Citizenship and Immigration Services, and they're both in the Department of Homeland Security. So we would recommend that you strike Customs and Immigration Services and insert Department of Homeland Security. It would help your bill be more accurate. And also, within the Department of Homeland Security, there's multiple agencies that may be providing those letters. So if you would consider that, we think that would be helpful. And the other comment is on page seven. It says, line eighteen says, examiners of drivers under the direction of the Department of Transportation. We think that's a mistake. The, in the, the city and county of Honolulu, the examiner of drivers is within the Department of Customer Services. And on the neighbor islands, I'm not sure where it is. So to, to fix that, we recommend just deleting under the direction of the Department of Transportation. That would fix that, that part there. And in conclusion, when I was with the Department of Homeland Security, one of the primary objectives was to figure out who people were. So in, in my mind, this bill helps out everybody. So with that, I'll stand on my, on our written testimony and do my best to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Next, Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights.
Hi, good afternoon Senators, Chair Moriyaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz. My name is Catherine Chen and I am representing the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. In addition to our written testimony, we want to support the amendments suggested by the Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights in testimony and any amendments they offer verbally here. Thank you very much for your support and for this opportunity to testify in strong support of SB two four five six. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is, let's see, sorry. Lost my place here. Next up is the White, White Friends of Civil Rights? White Friends for Civil Rights?
Here.
Yes, Pat McManahan? I think you have to unmute yourself.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Chair. I appreciate the comments from the Department of Transportation and as to the references to the immigration issues, I, I would defer. I would note that later on in the hearing, there will be an individual, Bob Merz, testifying about making one substantive addition which does not currently appear in the state unlimited driver's license. And we can talk about that later. Nevertheless, we stand in full support of this measure. Do ask on hospital, on the hospital version of on the House bill version of this matter, the Senate, the House did on section eight of the bill add in after Department, Department of Transportation. And I think that that would be an accurate location for the Department of Transportation. So that appears.
I think, Pat, just to clarify, this whole, this whole section is under the Department of Transportation, two eighty-six, so I don't think it's really necessary.
Two eighty-six is, two, yeah, two eighty-six is a general licensing provision section.
Department of Transportation. It's the Department of Transportation.
So you think if it's unnecessary, but it could just be a tech, I'm not sure how it's going to work when it passes from House to Senate. House put in Department of Transportation.
Do you have anything else to add to your testimony?
No, you know, we stand in strong support of this measure. And I also request that you do consider the proposed amendment that Mr. Merz will be making. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Merz?
Thank you, Chair Murawaki, Vice Chair Della Cruz, members of the committee. My name is Bob Merz. In twenty eighteen, I was appointed to the Hawaii Reentry Commission. At that time, we worked really, really, really hard on getting identification for people who are being released from prison. To this day, we still don't have it, even though it's been a requirement under the law for, since around twenty sixteen. So this, this limited identification would be, purpose identification would be really, really, really helpful to this group of people who are coming out and who do not have all of the other paperwork that they would need and don't have any kind of identification. It would help them to succeed in re-entering the community and re-establishing themselves in the community. So I did suggest an amendment. And it would include the materials that are given to people who are leaving prison. And that would be sufficient then, if presented, to get the limited purpose I D. Those documents are a certificate of discharge, an order of parole in most cases. Some people are released without parole and don't have that, but most do. And then a printout from the department that's issued by the department for, with the person's name, photograph, and date of birth. I would like to change my amendment to, so it would stop after the word birth and cross out, and social security number. Because there are a lot of complicated reasons for that. But in some cases, the people who are coming out of prison don't have a social security number. We don't want it to appear as if they, that's a requirement. So the amendment would just end with a period after the word birth in the last line. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Amy Abayani. Is Amy on?
Aloha. Thank you, Chair Murawaki and Vice Chair Della Cruz. I strongly support this bill. This bill was one of the bills proposed by the Filipino Legislative Caucus. And it was also included in a House Concurrent Resolution one six nine on immigration equity and inclusion. So this is a very practical bill that will be helpful, not only to the individual, but to our whole community to make them have I Ds and be included and participate more fully. I think some of the technical amendments can be easily accommodated, and I urge you to pass this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify is here on Zoom? If not, are there any questions of members of any of the testifiers? I do, Amy, since this is your group's, yes, bill. Mr. Merz is saying if he could include the prisoners who are being released is one of the other people who can be, who can apply for this. Do you have any, any, I know this comes from the Filipino caucus, but you know, adding this in, would that be okay with you folks?
I believe it should be, could be accommodated. And unfortunately, there are a lot of good Filipinos, and we also have Filipinos that may be benefiting from this.
Okay, and I'm going to ask the Department of Transportation, since this is their law. Mr. McCain? Adding, adding in the re-entry folks from the prisons, is that, would that be a problem adding one more group?
Well, I, Madam Chair, we, you know, that particular issue hasn't been thought through in our department, but I will rely on my, on my experience. You know, when I was with the Department of Homeland Security, one of our objectives was to figure out who people are. In my honest opinion, I believe that it's always good to be able to identify folks. You know, for whatever reason, for lots of reasons, and for the life of me, I can't figure out how, what the downside might be. Now, we do have very capable staff presence online. Preston Cole, he may have something to add. But in my mind, I don't, so if you want to ask Mr. Cole, if he-
Okay, Mr. Cole, let's have Mr. Cole. We need, we need a definitive answer here so we can move on. Mr. Cole?
Preston?
Preston?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Mr. Cole, yes, did you hear the conversation?
No, I am having problems connecting. Could you, am I repeating the question?
Yes, so of these people that we're seeing can come in for limited I D, limited purpose I D, we've been asked whether we could include in that number those who are coming out of prison to have their prisoner I D or some form of identification that they could use and be included in this list that can get a limited purpose I D.
Well, for the documentation that's being required, that we're proposing, yeah, they would be able to qualify. Again, most of them can't get a social security number. Most of the prisoners that come out of prison. So this, this limited purpose does not require one, right? So you don't need a social security number, you don't need to show your legally law-
So they had their prisoner I D, I understand there is a prisoner I D that gives a photo. And if they brought that along, that would be at least some way of recognizing their identity and should be sufficient for them to get a limited purpose I D.
For their, yeah, for their, for their name, yeah, yeah, to prove their name, yes.
All right, great, we will add that in then. Okay, so anyway, are there any other questions, members? I do have one more question, Department of Transportation. It says in your testimony that you, you are you are, that you state that folks with I D, star I D or actual I Ds are not eligible for the limited purpose I D. Can you explain that, or would you give us language that says these people aren't eligible and why?
Preston, could you?
Okay, yeah, that was put in because the intent of this limited purpose identification card was to allow for those people that could not prove, you know, they don't have all the documents for a real I D. So to us, it made no sense to let them have a limited purpose, and yet they already have a real I D compliant card. You know, what's the purpose of having a limited purpose if you're already holding a real I D compliant card? So that really kind of restricts people from just getting one because they don't want another card, I guess. I'm not sure for what purpose they would want one, but that's what that language is for, to restrict them from getting a card if they already hold a card.
How would you know that they have a real I D?
Well, if they're in our, yeah, well, if they're in our database, right? If they show up when we do a search, you know, we'll search on the name. And if it shows up, and in the future, we're actually going to be able to search other states that are participating as this so-called state-to-state check. Eventually, all states have to participate because a real I D is requiring it. So we would search by name and see if there's any matches there, so we would try that first, yeah.
So you're requesting that, that anyone with a real I D from this state or from any other state not be eligible for a limited purpose I D?
Yes, we didn't see a need for one if they already had the credentialing to get a regular identification card, a real I D, state I D.
All right, okay, members, any other questions of the testifiers? Okay, so we do have written testimony from the city and county Department of Customer Services in support, the legal clinic in support, Parents and Children Together in support, five individuals in support, and one individual in opposition. So members, we're going to move on. There's no questions. Thank you. Last bill is Senate Bill two six one three relating to Sustainable Development Goals. Codify sustainable development goals based on the U N global goals and indicators. And we have first up the Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Leah Laramie, representing the Department of Land and Natural Resources. And we support this bill and on our testimony.
Next up is the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Danielle Bass, is Danielle on?
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committees. My name is Danielle Bass, State Sustainability Coordinator in the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We'd like to offer comments on this measure. First and foremost, we do support the Sustainable Development Goals. However, we might, we believe that this bill could be unnecessary at this time for the reason that actually the Hawaii State Planning Act recently created, codified the Hawaii twenty fifty Sustainability Plan. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development took the initiative last year and used the U N Sustainable Development Goals as the framework for our state's sustainability and climate plan. So we would like to reference the Hawaii twenty fifty Sustainability Plan instead of codifying the U N S D Gs in the Hawaii State Planning Act. I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Members, any questions of Danielle or of D L and R? Yeah, any questions?
No, I just, I actually, I agree with Danielle, so I hope we do for this.
We will go into session very shortly. Okay. We will now move into recess, and we will return for decision making. Austin, could you? Okay, Hawaii's end there. Okay, welcome back. We are now going into decision making on Senate Bill two one nine one relating to grants. The Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, taking the Office of Community Service recommendation to delete the current tax clearance language in forty-two F one oh two B one C, as it's already included in the Certificate of Vendor Compliance. Taking Hano's recommendation to maintain the support for local organizations by deleting the either-or language in forty-two F one oh three B. And removing the reference to five oh one C three, which relates only to charitable organizations, and giving it a broader exemption for all nonprofits who are tax exempt under the Internal Revenue Code and other technical non-substantive amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Della Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabber? Excuse Senator Favela?
Aye.
Thank you. Recommendation is adopted. Next is Senate Bill two four five six relating to limited purpose identification cards. The Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, taking D O T's recommendation to align the application requirements for limited purpose I D documentation with limited purpose driver's license, requiring any individual who holds a real I D driver's license or real I D identification card issued by Hawaii or another state be ineligible for this limited purpose I D. And on page five, line nineteen, correcting the U S Customs and Immigration Services Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival Approval Letter and using the more current Department of Homeland Security. And on page seven, deleting on page, on line eighteen on page seven, where it says, "The examiner of drivers under the direction of the Department of Transportation," taking out the Department of Transportation and just leaving it with the examiner of drivers, so includes the counties as well. And finally, adding in the prisoner card for re-entry of persons immigrating into society after they are released from prison. So with that, members, any discussion? If not, the Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Della Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabber, excuse Senator, Senator Favela?
Aye.
Four members voting aye, one excuse. Recommendation adopted. And the final measure is S B two six one three relating to Sustainable Development Goals, as this is already in law. Chair's recommendation is to defer. That is the end of our agenda. Thank you all very much for participating. This hearing is adjourned.